...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Baikman?
Present.
Beesinger?
Boss?
Present.
Echis?
Present.
Frye?
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. The first item is the approval amendments from the November 27th meeting. Does anyone have any amendments?
They have to approve whether meeting on November 27th?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. The next area is public comments. If you're not on the agenda and you'd like to come and share for five minutes, you're welcome to come. Give your name, address, and work. Alright, we will move on to business and discussion items. Jada Ackerman and James Kruger.
Thank you. I'm Jada, this is James. I will be outgoing president of chamber effective next month. James will be the incoming president effective January whatever. Yeah. And so we just, we wanted to come tonight to have conversation with you. First of all, to thank you for all the support that we've been given and not just monetarily, but also in support of your volunteer hours and your presence at all the different events that we host. You know, I think we've seen the vast majority of you at all the events that we've done, whether it's the bike event or the mixers, the annual meeting, Black Swirl Night. So, thank you for that because I know it does take away from your family time, your personal time, and to have you guys there, it really does mean a lot. So, we have a lot of changes that have happened with the chamber. We have a lot of changes that are going to be happening. I think I outlined that in the letter that we sent you. Hopefully you all got that. We will be hiring a new employee. Hopefully, in the very near future, we'll be able to announce that. And we'd like to set up meetings with all of the different entities, including the city council and with Austin, just to have some dialogue with expectations and to be able to build that job description for our new employee. Having said all of that, we are standing here tonight in front of you to ask for your continued support and the renewal of the agreement that we have with the visitor center.
My only comment, thank you for the nice letter. And my only comment is, you know, when the, on the agreement on numbers five and six, I don't believe at lunchtime they're putting a sign out. Are they putting it on the door at least? Do you know?
It's my understanding that yeah, there is a sign that directs people to...
The museum when it's open?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know we bought that black sign?
Yes.
Convention and tourism bought the black sign?
Mm-hmm.
But was that, is the chamber using that or just using a door sign?
There was an email dialogue between Brenda and Michelle when that first came about. And through mutual discussion with the two of them, Michelle decided that since we had the open flag that was hung up, that she would use the A-frame sign for other events. She thought that basically, the sole purpose of having that A-frame sign was to give attention that we're open, and she felt like the flag could do that.
Okay. Speaking of a flag, someone brought it to my attention that yours has tattered at the chamber office.
Okay.
So just reporting that.
Okay, thank you.
They said, "Is that your responsibility?" I said, "No, but I'm meeting with the chamber tonight," so...
Perfect. We will, yeah, we'll take a peek at that.
We don't want a tattered flag at the chamber office.
No, no, we don't want a tattered flag.
So the, so the flag is at the Kester House then, saying open?
At the chamber office.
During the lunch hours, when it was supposed to be coverage.
There's a sign on the door that directs people.
Okay.
If, yeah, it says that we're closed until 1 o'clock, and that if they want assistance, they can go to the Kester House.
And so do you pull that now when the museum is shut, that amount, that second sentence?
I can only assume, I would assume so.
Since our museum season is over for the, just want to make sure.
Right.
Don't want to make them walk in the cold.
Yes, no, that would be bad.
Did you guys have any questions about the agreement? I guess with you hiring someone new, if it does have to be changed in any way, we'll just discuss it at that time.
That sounds perfect.
Where do we stand on Saturdays? Because I know that was part of the, that was a lot of the discussion when we signed the original agreement. I don't think you guys felt like you're getting enough, but I wasn't sure where everybody's thoughts were around Saturdays.
We have been open on Saturdays. I think James gets the award for most Saturdays volunteered.
Go James!
Right. So, we have been open from 9 to 3 o'clock. We asked each chamber board member to take at least one Saturday during a quarter. And then we filled that, the other time slots with RSVP volunteers. And then our staff took their times too. It was slow periodically. There were a few times in the summer that it was a little busier than others. We're continuing to be open during the slow off-season. We're going to be open, help me, 10 to noon. That seemed to be the busiest...
That's when you're planning to do it, when the museums are closed, like now?
Yeah.
Is 10 to noon?
Yep.
So you guys are okay with continuing at least that for another year in terms of honoring that part of it?
Oh, absolutely.
Aren't you guys trying to get some recognition from a chamber standpoint?
That's true.
Correct, yeah. We have to be open to have our name published, and so we're going to continue that. And through the interviews that we did, everyone that we talked to was completely on board with continuing that.
Does this agreement need to be amended then? Because on item six, it says visitor center will be open on Saturday from 9 to 3, and closed on Sunday. So does this need to be amended?
We could. 9 to 3 during museum...
Season.
Season, that's it. And then...
Well, what do you call museum season?
Well, April 1 to October 31.
Okay, thank you.
And then it'll just be November 1 to March 31st, tend to, we can make that change and we can approve that?
Sure.
So we could go ahead and approve this. How about that, that change being made, to be made? You guys have any other concerns about the agreement?
I'd move to approve the, a new agreement with the Chamber of Commerce as amended.
With the hours on Saturday?
Yep, with the authorization from the mayor to sign.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will be in touch.
Thank you for all your work.
Of course, thank you.
Alright, the next item is the Marysville Township, the fire contract. There's no person noted here. You're the one, you're the chosen?
I am the elected. Mike Green, Marysville Township, also have Sue Browery and Marty Nordus with me back in the, we'd just like to amend the contract from the current three-year contract down to one year. And we were told we had to come to the council to do that. So, that's what we're here for. Got any questions?
What was the reason you wanted to change it?
We would like to sit down with the city fire department and see whoever else is in charge and try to amend. Our costs are kind of going out of control. And the last year, I think they went up $6,000 from the current contract in this one. We'd like to sit down and see if we can come to some more equitable, like a flat rate instead of tied to the actual mill levy. That's what we're looking at, if we can do that. And so, our contract is up and we have to get something, we were supposed to do something earlier and we kind of dropped the ball. But if we go to a one-year contract, then we can sit down and do some discussions while we're at it.
Okay, so that's kind of your goal?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to let you guys know, all the investments we make in fire, for fire protection that covers you guys. And number one, we're setting up a reserve for $36,000 a year to help fund new fire trucks, just so you know. And we're also paying $50,000 a year for bond and interest expense on the rural fire trucks that we last purchased. There was three that we purchased before this, one in 2016. In 2016, we bought a new rural truck for $65,000. So right now, for rural fire equipment, we have about $750,000 after talking to Dave Richardson today. So we have an investment in it.
Well, I'm not saying you don't.
Yeah. And the other thing that...
You're being a wrong person here on that. Our costs are going up, up and up. And you know, with the change in evaluations, our, you know, I'm looking kind of sad. This would protect both us and you for budget forecasts if we went to a flat rate. Because you're betting that they're going to go up, and we're betting that they're not going to go down, I mean, going down, when we roll the dice on that. And this would be a flat fee that everybody could set their budgets to, what we're looking at.
Okay. Okay, well, I just wanted to know that we have made a significant investment, all of you guys that are here representing the township, and for the rural?
Right.
Fire service.
Right.
Mike?
Yes?
On compensation, it says that the township shall pay the city of fire protection and rescue services some equal to or equivalent to a three-and-one-half mill levy on assessed valuation for said township. What is your levy?
You're talking about our mill levy is?
Yes.
It's three and a half, is it, sir?
Three and a half.
Yeah, right there.
Well, I'm asking, what does that mean in dollars? What is a mill in your...
We paid about $22,000 last year, is that what you're asking?
I'm asking per mill, each mill.
I don't know that.
Ours is 67.4, and it's on assessed value. You don't know what your township...
I do not know that figure.
Because that's what, that's what we're being paid, is that. And I'm trying to figure out what that is. And also, I'd like to ask, excuse me, insurance goes up every year too, almost, I believe. And what better insurance, what are you going to use for fire if we don't sign this contract? If we don't come to an agreement, what are your options?
We're going to sign the contract one way or another. Don't get me wrong. We just want one year so we can sit down with and try and figure out something that we can do for the remaining two years of the contract. According to Mr. Sinclair, he'd like to keep everything on a three-year contract.
I think that's a good idea, too. That gives us a better opportunity to put our budget together. Because we start on it, what, March, April?
June is what he told me, I thought, but I might be wrong, but...
Okay, but then...
But that would give everybody a chance to sit down and talk about this one-on-one without calling each other names.
Well, this for sure.
The pressure of short-term, yeah.
Right, this is, yeah, this is kind of short-term. And I understand that's why we went to one year on this one.
Yeah.
But it would go back to three years.
Right, right.
I would suggest, I won't be on the council then, but I would suggest it go back to three years.
That's kind of what the end game was, in the discussion privately with Mr. Sinclair there is what we were, we were thinking. But this would just give everybody a chance to sit down and kind of discuss and see if we could come to something more equitable for us.
Who's Mr. Sinclair?
I thought that was his name.
St. John.
Sorry, I got your name wrong. Please excuse me.
He doesn't take it personally.
I'm sorry. I'm not the city.
Other than the year being changed, are you okay with the rest of the contract?
Oh yeah, we're very satisfied with the service. Don't get me wrong. And I wanted to commend the fire department 100,000 percent. We all do, you know, they do a great job. So, that's the only thing we want to change, or would like to get changed, I should say.
So we need to draft this up from here?
Make sure you have protection.
Just, yeah, I mean...
Oh, you'd have to change it from three to one.
You want a motion though, to go for a one-year contract?
To prepare a one-year contract or just an addendum for this one at this time?
Because we have to, we have to bring forward those changes that Craig has.
What kind of changes?
It really doesn't affect the overall contract. It's just some wording that he wanted in there about paying the firefighters.
Okay. So, at this time, do you want a consensus or you want to approve a one?
Just do a consensus, that would work.
So is it consensus of council that we're okay with a one-year contract and go ahead and have Craig drafted up accordingly?
Sure.
Okay, and we will give it to you with the whatever word changer is prior to us approving it at the next meeting, do you believe?
Yep.
Okay, so our next meeting is Wednesday, the 27th.
Good.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry I got your name.
I thought we had added somebody else to the mix. Is that an insurance company?
Alright. In your packet was an ordinance number 1858 regarding paying payroll next year.
Move to approve ordinance 1858. An ordinance appropriating money from the various funds to pay payroll of the City of Marysville for the year 2018.
Now to Kevin.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Baikman?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echis?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Six zero.
Alright. Is anyone aware of notices or hearings? Alright, the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
My only question is, do you guys know what the fundraiser is for the Kester?
It's for the brick wall.
I know, but do you know?
12-night, 12-night event. I don't know if you've seen anything going on. I don't know if it's in the dinner or...
Does anyone know?
I don't have anything to add, but...
Kester House. It's a fundraiser for the Kestner House Museum Brick Wall.
It's a chamber mixer art show in the old house.
I believe it was for the, was it to replace the cap or one of the walls that was deteriorating?
I think it's to replace the walls. I was just wondering what they're doing, what the actually fundraiser is.
Oh, for the actual fundraiser, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I, they told us what the purpose was, but I just wasn't sure what the fundraiser was. Anybody know? Sarah? Okay, so we're going to approve a fundraiser on the 15th at the Kester House. So, I'm sure it'll be nice if this year's...
January 5th.
But the 5th.
From 7:00 PM on.
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, that's part of the consent agenda, I'm sorry. Did anyone else have any discussion on the consent agenda? So we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay.
May I ask something? On the part about the 2018 cereal malt beverage applications, background checks are being run on all owners and managers. Approval by the CNB licenses by the governing body is issued, providing all checks and approved by the city inspector Richardson and police chief Ackerman. Do they just say they're approved, or do they give us any information or list or anything? Or do we get any information after this? Or we just vote? That is the list. That is the list. Well, I mean, do they say if there's any problems or anybody, no issues? Okay.
Alright, the background checks came out fine.
Okay, good.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. The appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriations ordinance, 3664.
My second.
Is there any discussion?
I might mention a couple things that are in there, large, the large bills, Emory, Sapp and Sons for the airport, apron reconstruction, that's $108,353. Hall Brothers for resurfaced quink, $215,509. And we are going to pay half of our property taxes, and that comes to $4,182. And one other large item would be for the Kester House Restaurant steps, and that amount was $36,341.
And so our total appropriations ordinance is $503,000?
Yes.
So, thank you for pointing that out. Also, that apron airport project, 90 percent from the FAA has already come back. So they will issue that check as soon as we approve this. Okay, roll call please.
Baikman?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echis?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. Austin?
First one up, the ADA ramp project for next year. The street committee and I went out and identified a couple routes where there were some citizens in need of a route to get to work in downtown, and figured this would be a great place to start putting ramps in. I included a map of those routes, and we had a discussion about how this, about fixing those ramps. But I, in the map, you can see all the red, or in this version, it's pink. All the pink lines along the route signify a regular curb that is not a ramp of any sort, or lay-down curb, or anything like that, where wheelchairs can't easily access it, or anybody with, like, with a wheel, yeah, with a wheelchair, they can't get down them. There are other places where they're not ADA ramps, and that's the yellow lines. But those are, at the very least, accessible by those trying to get by. So the, my recommendation, at the very least, is to move forward with the 16 locations that are identified on this map along those routes to start our ADA ramp project going forward. And I signified in this that if we went by the same formula that CES provided, providing mail, they still honor that, that price. The price would be $4,073 for the engineering on the 16 sites, as opposed to $10,057 for the 50 sites that I was recommending before. And this is all design engineering, which I just pointed out that typically, design engineering is not covered in a transportation alternative grant that, that we would be going for in the future.
So you want to move ahead with this without knowing, getting any grants for this or not?
Well, we don't, we wouldn't, the next grant cycle would be in, they haven't even announced when they're accepting applications. And this was the idea when I, when I first brought it up in our budget sessions, is that we would do a portion of it next year, apply, apply for grants. And this project would make it look, make our grant application look that much better, that we are dedicated to, to getting people around, making it walkable, making it accessible. And that gives us the points. And I already talked with the, the people who would look at, be looking at our grants, it's, this would show the dedication that we have. And that's why it was in the budget, and I thought that was what the consensus was when we were talking about it in the budget sessions, is that we would do something on our own next year, knowing that we were applying at the next opportune time.
Also, would it make sense though to do, if the engineering's not going to be covered by a grant anyway, would it not make sense to do the engineering for all of them so that they're shovel-ready for when you do a grant?
I mean, not only, not only that, the, the way that the, the bill or the estimate was structured was a, a one, well, not upfront, that's a bad, not a good way to put it, but a base rate plus sites. So you'd be paying that $1,000, or $1,200, I forget which, which one it is, no matter what, plus per site. So if, if we were to go back, they would, and say, "Hey, I want a second round," you're going to pay, I'm assuming, another $1,200 plus sites. So it's monetarily, I would say it, the more sites in one round, the cheaper it is for us.
Yeah, because 16 sites at $4,000 something, and 50 at $10,000, and you're figuring over $13,000 for the, for, if you do 48, you know, and stuff.
Yeah. What was the, so that, that's the engineering, so to do the 16 sites, for us to do those next year, what was the cost for that?
They, an estimate of about 1,000, depending, 1,000 per location is, is about right. Some may be more, depending on what the variance in hill you're going into. Some may be less because it's just right there, and, and we can get it to that crossroads that we want to get it to. But a good estimate is about $1,000 per site. So $16,000 is what I would estimate the construction would be for those 16 sites.
And there's some of these sites, we're going to work on, even with us doing the best we can, they still won't be within ADA compliance because of where they, the hills and the structure of the streets.
Right. So the ones that, you know, I noticed that all of Broadway has the yellow,
so we did the lay-down curbs. But is that because they switched out what ADA compliant is now? Because it used to be one-way, and now it's, you have to have the two squares?
No, no, no. It's because, well, if, more than likely, if we just went and, just like right at this corner right up there, they put those...
The bumps.
The bumps, just screwed them in and didn't put the thing. That would make them, at the very le, unless there's a huge thing that we would have to come over, that would make them more ADA compliant. It's just putting those...
So are the, are the ones that are the orange color, is that what we only have to do, is to put those?
Depends. And it's...
Some of them on Broadway are still too steep.
Some of them are pretty steep, yes.
Okay, I just wondered, because I was thinking, I wonder why Broadway isn't all done, but...
Yeah. There, yeah, there's only a few of them with those ADA...
So they all have the lay-down curbs on Broadway? And so we were probably intentional about that?
Yeah.
But now we don't have the little squares anymore, so now we have to, so I don't know if we'd want to go through and redo those right away. We'd rather focus on the curb curves.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so what you're proposing now is, is the purple ones, not the orange ones?
Yeah, the...
Or the, like the one on Fourth and Carolina. You have one purple and one orange. Would you do both of those, or just the orange? I'm sorry, or just the pink?
Fourth and Carolina, right there. This one right there. That, they're both blue.
No, this one right here, this is...
Oh, that would, yeah.
Pink and this is orange.
Yeah.
So would we do both, that entire corner?
More than likely, yes, but I, I'm more proposing this way. So everything to the...
Oh, you don't want to do that corner?
Not that I don't want to do it, but this is the pathway that we were talking about.
We're trying to stay on the north side, going across there.
Yeah, that was, especially that, yeah.
So, so then, okay, traveling to Fifth Street, are you going to do all four corners? Because all four corners have some red, or pink, or whatever that color is, purple?
Some of the corners, a couple of the corners are done already.
Yeah, there's one right there.
Well, there's only one, but one out of 10. So are you, so in your count of 16, are you just doing those two north ones?
Just the two north ones.
So you're doing that one and that one, and then you're going across and down? Is that the only one you're doing on that street?
Well, the, well, that was the, yes, the, one of the main, the main pathway was the north side, and that was what we discussed. What I was talking about, and you can go by it or not, is if we're already having somebody working on those north-side corners, why, why not have them work on the south side as well?
So on that corner, you're going to go ahead and do all four, because that one is just a half?
Depends on if it's necessary or not. If they're there, I mean, the corner, if it doesn't match up, or is not ADA compliant specifically, I know it has the bricks in it, and it's, it's a lay-down curb, and that's why they marked it that way.
I'm just trying to figure out where your 16 are. So then, then I'm going to, so those are my four?
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4. And then there's one right there, right by the bank, in their drive, in their driveway. No, right, right here.
Right over here.
Right over here. And that's something...
That's the drive-through over there.
And that's something I would discuss as well with the bank, because I think they were, they were really open to fixing this one. And I think they'd possibly be open to helping us out.
That's just a one thing?
Yeah, that's just a one.
We got to do both, both sides of the alley right out over there, too, so...
So...
But the alleys don't show pink? Are the alleys pink there?
No, there was a...
Should have been.
It shows it, right here.
Yeah. Right up there.
And 106?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the alley.
That drive-through, that drive-through was done, but I don't see a pink on that alley on the west side. I see two orange.
There's a little...
It's pink.
The only one...
In 106?
Yep.
In 106, on the alley, on the west side, is orange.
Right out here.
Mine's pink.
Mine's pink.
Oh, just right here?
Just right out here.
Okay. Oh, he's talking.
Where are you at, then? Well, that's just one. That's on the drive-through, right? But that, I see two orange.
Right.
Gosh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Am I clear?
I know what you're saying.
On the east side, it's pink.
All right, the east side needs done.
I didn't know we were doing the east side. The west side, the west side shows orange.
These need attention out here.
These one, yeah, he's talking about on this side.
On this side, right over here on the corner.
Which they are marked yellow, but they're really rough.
Yeah.
Right on our side.
They're orange, but you want those to be pink? It's a lay-down curb, but you want it redone?
It needs to be redone.
On the, on the east side of 107? Yes, is that where you're at now?
Yeah, he's talking, he's talking about.
Right around here, buddy. Going off our property.
And then, so then you go on the Kester House, then 11th, and 11th and Elm, you're going to do the two south corners, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
And then on 12th, you do three out of the four corners?
Right.
One of them's already done.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Thirteenth, you do the two north?
The, that one, yeah, the, the one corner on the north side, yeah.
You're just doing the one at the courthouse corner?
Yeah.
And then on, on the fourteenth, are you doing all the four corners?
Yeah. Because there, well, there's only two ADA ramps, but.
And then on fifteenth, you're doing the one on the northwest corner?
Yep.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Because you added this right there, is that why you're at seventeen? Okay. You guys follow that?
Yeah, but I got to ask, why did you choose this route? Are there people in wheelchairs specifically, and not in other areas?
These are where, and we always welcome people to come in. But these are where we've gotten the most, actually, all the complaints about their routes to downtown and to work.
And we're going to have to top with some property owners along this route, too, because there's several sidewalks along this route, too, that's going to need some repair.
Well, that was my question to Austin, is, I thought the map was extremely helpful, but it didn't tell me the, how, what the sidewalk looks like.
Yeah, condition?
Depends on, depends on where you look. It's, it's, it's really good in places, and then it's really bad in other places.
So you put in this ADA, uh, corners, or ramps, and then you get on a sidewalk that you can't traverse.
Anywhere you go up there, both sides, we looked at both sides of the sidewalks when we were out driving around. There isn't one side any better than the other coming down the streets.
So we're going to.
And the, I guess, the, unless we decide differently, and this may be where the grant comes in, because the grant, if we were to get it, would help with connecting sidewalks together and making them ADA compliant. But to preempt that, I would, because I think there's a lack of knowledge that we have a fifty-fifty share program. And if people were to know that the city not only will help them take out the concrete, because we want, we want them to get the concrete to the right place, but we will also pay for half.
We do the removal?
Yes, yes, we do.
We do removal and half of the cost of the material?
Half of the cost of the material.
Austin, I know that some of these sidewalks are in bad shape because we have so many trees, and the trees have bucked up. In some places, you can see the sidewalk has risen, and the root of the tree will come through. Are you going to require these people to cut these trees down?
That's up to them, it really is. In fact, my sidewalk, we're planning on going around the tree. So that's our choice.
Okay.
So, because it, our tree's this big.
Oh, sure.
And it's a nice tree.
A lot of big, old, beautiful trees.
And so the plan for my sidewalk would be to go around the tree. And that's just a little U around it. But fifty, and I'll preempt that, fifty-fifty share program requires that you put in a five-foot sidewalk. So just so you know out there. No, I want to get an advertisement out there, and I think, and I think I have an idea of how to do that. I want to run it through the channels before I make that announcement on how I'm going to do the advertisement. But I think we can either match people up with contractors, or they can hop on and let them know, once we bid this out, that we're going to have a contractor right at their house. And if they want, they can contact them, see if they can fit them in in between putting in the ADA ramps.
We thought about, on the water bills, there's a small area that we could say, reminder, you know, we share the sidewalk costs, in case you want improvements made, or contact City Hall for specifics or whatever. There's only a small section Sammy said that we can put it in, but we could always, just to kind of get it done all over the city, really.
Quarterly newsletter, it goes to everybody with water.
Well, that's true, quarterly newsletter.
It makes sense to actually figure out, here's if we're going to do sixteen corners, and then also do the sidewalks and just bid it out as one project, and just charge them back, and they would save money in the long run, right? If we just kind of did this one big project, as opposed to twenty different projects?
Some places along there, the sidewalks are a couple of years old.
I'm not saying we replace all the sidewalks, I'm just saying the pieces that need to be. If you said, I'm going to do these seventeen corners, seventeen projects, and did the sidewalks, and get the buy-in from the owners, and say, okay, you're going to save thirty percent or forty percent if we do it now with everything else.
Actually, I mean, that's a bridge point that, where we would, I was kind of getting.
People willing to take. Yeah, and you know what would be, you know, sad, is if you have three, and then no, and then a three, and then no.
But it would be.
It's going to happen.
Yeah.
Will these people have to put in five-foot sidewalks? Aren't our sidewalks four feet wide? Isn't that what we?
Some of them down there are probably three, aren't they?
Some of them's narrower than that, even, down there.
Yeah.
But if, if they, if they want the fifty-fifty, they have to do the five foot, because that's the idea. If they, if they want to just pay for it outright and be a part of the project, then they could pay for it outright.
Well, but some, like me, lives on a corner, and if we go down one side and down the other side.
It takes a lot of your yard.
This is heavy yard.
Well, yeah, we don't have a very big yard. But my concern was the cost, because, you know, we do have a spot that was bucked up by a tree. And in order to make it smooth and passable, that part could come out. But that part, five foot, then we'd have to go from property line over to the corner and down this way, and do the entire sidewalk in five foot.
If you wanted, if you wanted fifty-fifty. I mean, that's the, that's the, it's because, it's, the idea is, because it's one of those requirements for ADA. In fact, for the TA grants, they will require five foot, for TA grant, you can't.
In residential.
Yeah, for any sort of, to get that grant.
I remember way back, they were going to put a walking trail from, I think, wasn't it North Street Devi, cleared down through here with.
But that was like nine foot.
Yeah, like a wide, wide, through there.
I think that was the real problem.
Winding through the trees and stuff, you know, everybody had a problem with being that wide.
But even five-foot sidewalks, you know, some of those properties aren't very big.
And there are some along Elm Street. They still have nice sidewalks. I'll use, right in front of Sharon's house, really nice sidewalk, four foot wide. You don't want to widen that, because you go this far, you're right on top of her house, almost. You go this way, all those nice trees get taken out. It's, there's no win in that one. But she has a really nice sidewalk in front of her house, so it's, it's great.
So we would just leave that and aim for the ones that are in bad shape?
Yeah.
So maybe specific letters to those people?
Targeted, yes.
You know, Tony's here. Tony, I was trying to go with Brad's concept about, you know, you give us a price for fifty sites. Well, that would be if we do fifty sites all at once, I assume. You wouldn't want to.
We wouldn't necessarily do the all fifty.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
All we do is get the engineering.
I was saying, if we, one, all you're asking for is the improvement, the engineering. So putting that aside, I was suggesting if we decided we wanted to do seventeen projects, would you also figure out what sidewalks needed to be replaced at that time, and try to, try to bundle them if you could? May not be feasible, given all the things we just talked about, but.
So you're going back to engineering for seventeen sites, okay?
Well, I'm, I guess I was going to move that we could do all fifty.
I almost did, I second that.
But if we do, if we do fifty, you'd want us to, to do the engineering side, you'd want us to do the improvements all at once, right?
Oh, no, not necessarily.
You would let us spread that over a two- or three-year period?
Well, we could design, we would conceptually design all fifty, so you could all look at them, see which ones are reasonable to do or not do.
Okay, I just didn't know if you allow us to execute that. That would, that would be our decision. He'd just draw the picture, and we, we'd just decide when they'd be constructed.
And that was, it originally included one construction project. Not, all of them don't have to be in it, but I prefer it not be five construction projects, because that'd be a lot of additional work. If it, you know, if it becomes, there's a second project with the rest of them, and that can be put together fairly easily. The intent was that we had one construction project, whether it was thirty, or forty, or fifty, all done in one project, but we don't have to do it that way.
But you would allow us to do it, like, two projects?
But the engineering's the engineering. Assuming the requirements don't change for ADA, that engineering is good.
Yeah, so then all that'd be left in project two is just to grab the sites you want to do at that point, and put them in a set of plans.
If, if we're going to include sidewalks in that, too, if some people want to participate, are we going to have to have an engineer of five? A five-foot sidewalk, rather than a three-foot that's there now?
We wouldn't necessarily need the engineering for the sidewalk.
No? No?
The only way is if you wanted, if you wanted the contractor to bid, to bid it and construct it, you may want to have some type of direction of what to do if they hit a tree, if they, you know. Does it have to move into the landowner's yard, or are we going around the tree? I think you'd go in some direction there, may necessarily engineer, but we have to somehow deal that, detail that, so they can bid it correctly.
But that's got to be a separate, because you, you didn't even include, who knows how many sidewalks? You don't even know what that even entails, to say how much that engineering project would cost, so.
You know, there's ways to do that. We can, as we're doing this, take pictures of all the sidewalks, and we can all sit down as a review in the ramps and say, yeah, this one's pretty bad. If we can get the owner to do it. And you want to put that as part of the project, and we'll see how simply it can just be a note on the plans.
Price just went up.
Well, it's just, if you want to go ahead and approve the engineering for all fifty sites, you have that option now.
Well, that seems like the most cost-effective way to go.
If we're going to pursue, if we are going to do it, that's a key thing, yeah.
Yes, but then the short term, yeah.
If you say, when you say the next TA grant will become used when?
It'll, at the earliest, it'll be FY 2019, which begins in July.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, or they could be doing 2020, so which is July.
Well, that's not too bad.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any other questions for Tony? Always here?
Thank you, Tony, that we approved the engineering for the fifty sites listed, or the noted.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh, so our direction is to go ahead and get the engineering done, but our plan is to do the seventeen we pictured this year, and then do a TA grant for the rest of them, and possibly sidewalks, once you determine what sidewalks need to be made, improvements need to be made. Okay.
So do we have to change that dollar figure to seventeen sites instead of sixteen?
Oh, no, the, we're doing the fifty in engineering, so that's dollar figure is $10,057. And then the seventeen sites comes in when we decide what the project's going to look like.
Okay. Second thing, I included the financials for the month of November. General fund was, we're eight thousand below what we are, what we were as of 2016, end of November. It's pretty, hopefully, it's pretty manageable. We're already taking some steps to get it back. For instance, the first ordinance of 2016 December was about nine, ninety thousand for the general fund, whereas this year is seventy-five thousand. So just a little switch there. So we're working to get that back to where we were at the beginning, and it's looking pretty good, especially since we started with a $40,000 hole at the beginning of this year. The, we spent $241,431 out of the sales tax fund for ongoing projects, and Darlene noted those projects earlier. But we're still 50,000 above where we, the beginning point of this year, so we're still in good standing. The water revenue fund is down 54,094, but we paid that second part of North Street Waterline replacement, so that's where that comes from. And the sewer fund is up by $13,652 from the end of November 2016. So that's good. As you, as you can see from the project cost records, we have, we have completed most of our projects for this year. We spent about $1.4 million on these larger projects slash improvements. And, but that also, that $1.4 million takes into account the, what the FAA refunded. That's just how my project cost was set up. So take that out, it's probably about $1 million in improvements, just out of, out of our funds. Just on that sheet, and that does include all the smaller projects.
Austin, I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow that. So the, was it $90,000 we got back from the FAA on the apron project?
Well, we've gotten, so we've only paid ten percent of the FAA, the apron project.
Okay, and the rest they refund, they?
They've given, yeah, they've refunded us. And that's, I want to say that's about $400,000 they've refunded us.
Okay, so it's a mil, I'm sorry, so we spent a million because of $400,000, $1.4 million, we got $400,000 of that back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so about a million in improvements this year. We still have final pavements on Clink and Airport Apron Project. So, once those are done, we'll pay those off.
So I just want to clarify that, one comment you made about the general fund. You said, you made a comment, we were in the hole, what do you mean, we were in the hole? We started out with a balance of 423.
423, and look at the balance at the beginning of 2016.
The balance at the beginning, the 480.
480. We started 480 at the beginning in 2016. We started 423, 423,000 at the beginning of 17. So that, that I'm calling our hole.
Well, it was a reduced beginning balance.
Right.
But we didn't expect to get up to 480.
No, 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 but we, we expected to maintain. But the past few years, it's been going down by 30, 40,000. So that, it's just normal, I mean, just, what I saw is normal spending. We're trying to cut that back, so we could end at where we began.
Right, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
And in your highlights, you made a comment about, are you working on that Dargatz Park plate? Is that what that meant? On your highlights last week, you made a comment, they pulled the pitching mound up. Is that, that they were talking about?
Oh, that's.
At Dargatz Park?
Yeah, that's Dale, yeah, Dargatz Park. And they are going to replace or fix the backstops.
That was mentioned at the recreation meeting?
Yes, but that was already on the list, that getting the materials was the challenge.
That was already on the?
On their list, yes.
So we had a meeting with Brian Farkel and Max Cersei, and Pam Schröler.
And Pam Schröler, yeah.
And they had brought up some concerns about Dargatz Park. And I don't really, I drive by and look at all the kids that drive at Dargatz Park, but I don't really look at the facility. And they had concerns about a pitcher's mound, as well as the backstop being unsafe, so. being unsafe. So, um, they're already working on that to make sure that that's been addressed for the next, when spring season comes up. So I thought that was a good idea. I told them to, whenever things like that, to please bring it to our attention, because we're not necessarily at Dargatz Park playing ball there, so.
Right.
Um, we need their eyes as well. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, do you have anything, Debbie? All right, we'll go to standing committee reports. Um, someone came, Gary Gundafinger gave the presentation of Rotary today, did a really nice job talking about our street department, all the streets they maintain, how many blocks they maintain. He did a nice job. Um, someone afterwards came up and was concerned about 11th Road South and Keystone, how uneven it is, broken up it is, wanted to know what our plans are. I said it's not going, you know, it's probably two or three years out, but it could possibly be within the five-year plan if we all agree to that. But, uh, anyway, he said that, um, it's a lot, there's a lot of traffic there, the road is in such bad condition, he wanted to know if we wanted to put a reduced speed limit sign there. Um, you know, obviously it's 30 miles per hour out there, right? Is there any speed limit sign out there at all?
Yeah.
There is, it says 30 miles per hour. And, you know, he went as far as to say, maybe you should put uneven pavement and reduce it down. How, what are your feelings about that?
Well, anybody that drove it knows, not even so.
You don't wanna put a reduced speed limit on it?
Just another sign to put up and reduce this.
And you're gonna have to troll it.
Yeah.
Well, I just thought I'd bring his concern to you guys. You guys just wanna leave it at 30 and see if we can get it repaired in the next five years? Keep it in.
Well, I think it just needs to be on the list we asked for in terms of the prioritization of street repairs. Maybe we don't wanna lose sight of it, but that's why we want that list, is so we can start telling people, unless something changes, this is when we've got it budgeted to repair.
Right, right.
So, I think that'll be very helpful.
Okay, so, and, and when we get that access management plan in January, is when we can sit down and do a long-range plan and serious street improvement plan. Okay. And then, um, another person called and was concerned about 12th Road. I should've brought this up while the Marysville Township was here, Marty Nordis was here, but anyway. 12th Road, they specifically asked me to drive 12th Road to see how bad it is. It's very washboard. I spoke with Marty Nordis, who does the grading with the Marysville Township, and he said their plan was to do it this week. We haven't had any rain, they've been waiting for rain. We do have rain forecasts on Thursday, on Thursday, I guess, 50-50 chance. But, um, anyway, his plans are to hopefully get it graded this week. Maybe he'll wait till next week if the rain comes.
It's really too dry to cut it at all. I mean, all you're doing is filling in the humps and they'll be out, that'll be bounced out in the next day anyway, so.
Yeah, but he said he'd been waiting for quite a while to do that, so.
Yeah, he was hoping it'd rain.
Yeah, so I should've asked Marty while he was here.
Thursday would be a good day.
After the rain?
After the rain, yeah.
Yeah.
I was told by someone who lives on that road that they did cut it this weekend and did a good job.
This weekend they were out?
I was told by somebody that lives on that road, he just told me that today. He said they, he, I, he was impressed, he didn't think in the dry, they really couldn't do any good, and it did a lot more good than they thought.
Boy, we wish Marty could've heard that.
I think his son was running the grader, and they were impressed, and he had done a good job, so.
Well, I, I just stopped him, uh, Friday night at the game, so that's pretty impressive. So thank you, Marty Nordis and the Marysville Township for making those people happy, and that's good. You know, it's really nice too, that, you know, they, they call about a concern, but it was really nice that they also said it was nice, that the improvement was appreciated. So both sides worked out well for us to know that it was done, and it improved the situation. So, all right, anybody else have anything on the street?
Yeah, I had somebody call me, uh, on the new stoplight that we put up.
On 20th Street?
By Hardee's, yes. Uh, you're coming from the east, right around 5 o'clock, you've got the sunburners down, and you can't see the light when it turns from green to red or whatever, cause there ain't no light on the vertical pole where you can see it. It's all above.
Have you been told about that before?
Yes, Keith talked to me about that.
Eastbound.
And I, I, so I went that way just to see what they were talking about, and they're right, you can't, you can't see that with the sunburners down.
Want to be the same way coming west going east in the morning?
Yeah, cause there's one down on the side of there.
Coming up the hill from the east. There's one on the pole.
There's one on the pole going west, but there's not one on the pole going east.
That's so far back to the north there, and, uh, that turn lane there, that 20th Street Dodge. Remember they set that pole clear back there, and they put the two out in the middle? Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. So what do you think we need to do?
Yeah, see how much it costs to put one on the side.
Okay. All right. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else? Water sewer? Parks rec? I should've left that for Dargatz Park to Parks Rec. Cemetery and airport? Police and fire? Admin and finance? Don't have any appointments or wages. The city attorney isn't here. I do, I would like to go into executive session for about 15 minutes. I have that, um, motion, if somebody would like to read the motion, or they can say it by their memory if they choose.
All right.
So 15 minutes, what time is it bound?
7:56.
7:56, so it'd be, let's say, um, 7:10, 7:12, 8:12, 8:15? Make 8:15, make it easy.
I move the city council recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters, except, exception KSA 75-4319B1. In order to discuss a performance matter involving a city employee, the open meeting to resume in the city council chamber at 8:12, the executive.
8:15.
8:15. The executive session will include the governing body and?
Just the governing body for now.
Just the governing body for now. Nobody, that's it.
That's fine. Is there a second?
Set.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, here we go. We'll be back. Set are made during executive session, and we will continue with the regular session of the city council at this time. All right, we will move along to roundtable. Uh, two things I wanted to mention, light up Marysville, there are lots of lights around town. I'm really grateful for the participation, and, um, please go through and vote. I think they've made a great effort to make our, our city, uh, your lights look phenomenal, Brad, I will note that, so. And, um, don't, be sure and put on your calendar the next meeting, because of the Christmas holiday and the Christmas holiday, a double holiday, will be, um, the 27th, Wednesday night at 7 o'clock. So, um, put that on your calendars.
The 27th, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wednesday, the 27th at 7 o'clock. So, roundtable. Keith?
I don't have nothing, no.
Okay, Darlene?
Um, I don't have anything either.
Brad?
I would like to thank Brenda. They're having the reception on Wednesday.
Oh, that's, yeah.
For her going away. Um, I wanna thank her for all her years of service at, um, Chamber Office, and I think she did a great job, and I just very hopeful that they find somebody that will be as dedicated.
It's always hard to fill shoes.
Yeah, as she was, so, thank you, Brenda.
Yeah, after 17 years, so, yes. And please go and thank her, that's Wednesday at 3 to 5.
3 to 5.
Okay.
Come on, no, this is Wednesday.
Now you're messing me up. On Wednesday, 3 to 5. It is Wednesday, 3 to 5.
I know it's on Wednesday.
At the Chamber Office?
Is it later than 5? I thought it was Wednesday.
It's 6.
To 6, I think.
3 to 6, at the Chamber Office, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Vic?[1785.06]